I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no consideration of items to add or delete from the agenda. At this point, do we have any members of the audience who want to speak to any items on the agenda? All right, we'll move forward to communications. Not having those, and so now we're on our report.
We went so fast, I forgot to change my slides. So, reports for you tonight, we wanted to talk about a little bit of the summer work. I reported to all of our staff earlier this week on the summer work that happened. Our kindergarten wing, I think we're at like ninety-nine point something percent finished at this point. They received new HVAC, new cabinetry, they will have new carpet at Christmas that had to be pushed back when the project got a little behind. They also got some new furniture. Also at Lakeland Primary, the courtyard has been revamped. We had all the old railroad ties that were decimated over time and by termites replaced. So we had some new block put in, it is absolutely beautiful. Wilkett Mills got a landscaping update and we have some new signage for them that's on order. Line of Brighton, maintenance worked very hard to move all the things out of Line of Brighton we were going to keep. And they had their appraisal a week or so ago, so we are hoping to have a close on that sale very soon. The intermediate had, I think, about five classrooms that got some new carpeting. Junior, senior high was a lot of big projects. The art room, special education rooms, athletic office, and the junior high wing were all updated with new HVAC, new cabinetry, and new flooring. We are still, I believe, in process on replacing the lower level of the bleachers in the main gym. The aux floor, aux gym floor was recoded and our tennis courts were recoded. We also started the Hall of Fame Project Phase One. So there was a lot of work going on in the district. This is all the extras that were going on, not all the cleaning that happens every summer and all the yard work that happens all the time, so lots of work. So that is the summer work updates. Lakeland by the numbers, the Irene results are now out, so that's exciting. Our third grade having eighty-two point eight percent pass rate. That is an eight point six percent increase from the twenty-twenty-four scores. And we are also twelve point nine percent up over the last two testing sessions. So we have made a lot of great progress. Indiana was celebrating that they've got their largest increase in the passing scores as a state. And that increase was five percent, so our increase is bigger than that. So next would be enrollment. Right now, we are sitting at fourteen forty-four for our total for opening day. That was actually yesterday, I didn't have time today to check it to see if it's still the same. But if you remember to the spring where we always talk about the size of the graduating class and the size of the kindergarten class coming in, then my estimate was that we would be at fourteen oh three. And we are at fourteen forty-four. So we are actually up eleven students from where we closed at the end of the year. So that is exciting news for us. And that is all I have.
All right, I'll do a trajectory report.
All right, so we are at fifty-eight percent of the year at the end of July. In the ed fund, we've collected seven point eight million or fifty-nine percent. In the operations fund, we've collected four point three million or sixty point, or sixty percent. And then in our ed fund expenditures, we have expended eight million of our, eight million dollars, which is sixty-one percent of our revenue budget. And we have expended four point five, almost four point six really, of our operations fund. Or sixty-three point four percent of our revenue budget there. July was a very expensive month. As Tracy just mentioned, all those projects and stuff. August will probably be, we're still getting our bills in, so we're probably gonna have another expensive month. We were able to use some bond money though, from our twenty-two bond that we still held left over towards the kindergarten projects. So that really helped, was huge. We'll have that all spent though, here by the end of August, that'll all be spent. But as you can see, I was kind of floored at my operations numbers in July. As you can see, forty-seven percent of the money expended out of our operations budget was for repairs. So that's HVAC repairs, that was the rooms, that was, that's where all that gets put. And I just, that, yeah, really jumped out at me this month. I, yeah, stopped for a minute and I went, whoa, you know? It made our salary number really dip, which speaking of that, I think I mentioned, I kind of gave you some notes a little bit on that too, the salary. We, in both categories are actually lower than normal, because you know, we, our summer help, or you know, we just don't have our normal staffing in the summer. So that, that did cause things to dip for salary and benefits, but yeah, that repairs number just really like, it really, yeah, hit me hard, so I'm still a little bit like, holy moly, about that. But anyway, I don't know, do you have any questions for me for where we're at right now? I'm hoping that gets way better after August though, because, yeah. Yeah, I pretty much told everybody unless it's on fire, we're not doing it. That's kind of where we're at, you know, for the rest of the year, so, nope.
We appreciate your update. Kind of what we expected, I guess, in the summer months as well with all the projects we have going around our buildings right now.
Yeah.
School board president's report, so last night before the first day, I don't have much to say. We look forward to the school year and are excited to see the kids back in the building, so.
Maybe one of my house.
We got my house all day, that'll be nice.
Love you, Brady.
So all right, we'll move on to new business.
Okay.
Item one is the Don Wood Foundation Grant.
Yes, this is super exciting news. I am asking that you approve the acceptance of an eight hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollar grant from the Don Wood Foundation, which will completely pay for the Manufacturing Academy, the Learn to Work program, which is a joint effort between Prairie Heights, Westview, and Lakeland. Lakeland will be the fiscal agent for the grant and for the program. Program will be sponsored on our campus, so they will come to us first. So this covers.
Definitely still moved, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this covers all of the equipment, the renovations, the salary for the teacher for the first year. So it's a pretty complete amount, we were hoping to get at least half and got the whole, the new budget, so.
Can we reapply for that?
Probably not to the extent that we did this time, but yes, we can apply to Don Wood for other things. I don't know if we can afford the same project again.
All right, we have a motion.
So moved.
Do you have anything? Second, Michelle Lee, any comments? I guess, when do that start, twenty-twenty-six in the fall, so will that construction be going on?
Yes, we are hoping to have that all bid out and have everything starting ramping.
All in favor? Or my motion carries. Moving on to Purdue University I E C C agreement.
Yes, so that is the Indiana Manufacturing Competitiveness Center. And this is an agreement with them. We've been working with Lisa Deck, who's part of that center, to do this manufacturing process. So part of what was written in the grant was this agreement. So I'm asking you to approve this agreement so we can start spending the bond money and get going with that.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
The next item is also spending some of that bond money, or not bond money, but some of that grant money that we just talked about. So this is the agreement with Kyle Key Faber and his company Faber Design. He did all the estimated costs for remodeling the space for the Manufacturing Academy. So this is, the total estimate you saw was the three hundred and some. That is not what you were approving, you are only approving his fees, which I don't have in front of me, but I think were around twenty-two or twenty-four thousand. So that is what I am asking you to approve at this moment.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, the next item, we have Eric here from Ice Miller, and he is gonna talk to us about bond timelines and bonds.
So yeah, good evening, every members of the board and administration. I am Eric Wong with Ice Miller, Indianapolis Space Law Firm. And our kind of niche specialty is to serve as bond council school corporations. So anytime school corporations have the need to finance their capital needs and can't do it with cash on hand, we come in and walk through the legal process as it pertains to being able to fund those upfront and repay those bonds. This is my sixteenth year at Ice Miller. Some of you who've been around me know the name Jane Herndon. She, I served under her tutelage and she actually just retired at the end of this past year as a full-time law partner. So I've been working with Lakeland my entire career, even though it's been a few years since I've been up here. Jane showed me the wings way back in two thousand nine, twenty-ten, and I've been working with Lakeland my entire career. So appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and to kind of talk through the financing and the timeline. So when Dr. Blasey showed up on the slide deck, there's a presentation from Stiefel Nichols and Company. They're an underwriter or investment bank. And I believe the broom Stiefel had been before you at some point here recently. I told him I would do my best job if it pertains to be an investment banker tonight. Seriously, there is overlap with, you know, his presentation materials and what we talk about from a legal perspective. So with this slide here, this is just a summation of your current debt service obligations. So anything that comes out of property tax funding in order to pay existing debt service on bonds. So you can see very small, starting with the red common school fund loans through twenty-twenty-eight. And then we have three major bond issues, twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen, to twenty twenty-two. Series of bonds, each color-coded to basically show debt service extending out through the year twenty forty-one. So that's just kind of a snapshot of your overall existing debt service, broken down by each individual bond issue and when those were issued. The next slide shows, it's kind of the same thing, but it's just showing more in aggregate. So what's your overall debt service levy, including the operating balances? So again, just showing a levy of around just shy of one point two million this year, just over one point four million in next year, and then obviously you can see going on through twenty forty-one. Notably, the years twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty-six, twenty thirty-seven, it's right around a million dollars in levies. So pretty steady throughout those middle years and then eventually falling off included by twenty forty-one. So that's the current picture, that's the existing bonds you guys have out now. So with discussions with Dr. Blasey administration, as well as with Barton Povilma, obviously there have been needs identified on potential projects. First and foremost, the Lakeland Junior Senior High School project. Estimated, again, by a design professional, around six point six million dollars, including what we call the hard cost, which is what you typically think is like the traditional brick and mortar. Soft cost, which would include anything from architect fees to moving dirt, equipment, things of that nature. So all those included, as well as the cost of issuing bonds coming to market. So that includes all the professional fees, title insurance, any other real estate work that has to be done, et cetera. So the estimate on the proposed Lakeland Junior Senior High project comes in right at six point six million dollars. Obviously with the large, large bulk of that going towards the renovations, the office addition, the cafeteria, et cetera. Project B, and again, we're listing these separately, in part because, especially with the Lakeland Junior Senior High School, that is the facility unto itself. So the notion is that we can do the work of Lakeland Junior Senior High and not tackle anything else independently. Similarly, we kind of labeled Project B as more kind of a mixed bag among different facilities because even though they are touching different facilities, no individual facility is reaching that same threshold. So we just kind of put these all together just for simplicity sake to show the various buildings that could be touched by Project B, including the primary school, Wilkett Mills, and then the potential for the construction of the new maintenance barn, which I think has been discussed in prior board meetings, the needs surrounding all those facilities. So similarly, you know, Pychar, you can see here a breakdown by facility and where those dollars would go. Again, the small notion being that just the cost of issuance of them coming to market for bonds with respect to Project B, again, you can see the main components there as we've worked with the administration of Barton Povilma. So identify those needs and get professional costs estimated on those areas and components. So what Luke wanted me to share with you this evening was two scenarios. There are more than two possible ways to skin the proverbial cat, but he just wanted to paint kind of two different pictures. Scenario one here be looking at minimizing the tax impact in the initial years, but then basically leveling off right around that two million dollar mark of an annual levy through roughly twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight. So what that would mean effectively is that there would be a little bit of an increase in twenty-six and basically maintain steady throughout the next ten years. But then any additional projects that would come on would have to be discussed for a potential other tax increase. Obviously still falling off by twenty forty-four. So that's scenario, that's one scenario he wanted to share and present on. Scenario number two, treats a little bit differently. And we'll come back and talk about this in a second, about Lakeland's debt service tax rate and how historically and comparatively low you guys are relative to anybody in the state. So scenario B was an option of looking at a little bit higher of an increase in twenty twenty-six, but then leveling off in future years, which would allow capacity for future projects depending on what your needs are, what you are identifying, and what you think you might want to tackle those. So again, just a couple different ways to structure any future bond issues. Again, with scenario number two being that one that would allow more room in the future, basically. Now this piece, this gets way down in the weeds on the, on the numbers. And I just want to bear in mind, so two different tax debt service rate scenarios. Scenario A again being kind of that more level repayment over time with less room for future projects. So the gross impact of that, which you can see in all the footnotes, does not include things like circuit breaker tax caps, does not include the newly enacted homestead credit that's gonna start benefiting homeowners here in twenty twenty-six and beyond. So these figures are simple in that they don't account for all of those things. But you can see at a large scale, the current debt service tax rate is only nine cents at Lakeland School Corporation. That is in the lowest ten in the state of Indiana out of two hundred and ninety-ish school corporations. So something to be very proud of, you guys have managed your facilities at a super low tax rate. The flip side of it means that anytime you take on any kind of a bond issue, it's bound to have a little bit of an impact, right? So scenario A again would be an estimated gross debt service tax rate fifteen cents, again, because it's thinking more level throughout time. Scenario B would have an impact in the near term of twenty-three cents, again, with more leveling off, with more room in the future. And then the last piece were just some considerations that Luke wanted to, again, reiterate. Lakeland has currently the seventh lowest physical debt service tax rate in the entire state out of two hundred and ninety-ish school corporations. And of the six that are lower than Lakeland as far as debt service tax rate, half of those have an operating reference. So that even though the debt service tax rate that is strictly used to fund municipal bonds for capital projects may be lower, on top of that, those school operations have an operating reference, which adds tax rate in a different category. So another interesting statistic is that the average, statewide average on debt service tax rate is just above forty cents. So that is to say that even if you were to undertake, for example, scenario number two, and bring your tax rate to twenty-three cents, you are still well below the state average, probably still in the lowest quartile. I guess which is Luke's next bullet point, that's right below there, so we're taking along the same terms. So yeah, the, just the question he left was how does this debt financing fit within your long-term plans over the next five, ten years? And what are some of the needs that may have been identified by design professionals as far as what comes next? And when would you want to tackle those? And that can help make the determination on if you choose to go forward, what scenario you would choose to structure under. Any questions on the finance piece?
Okay, so it's way down there, well.
So the other piece that I have, I don't know if you have it on your.
I did not go down.
That's why, because I brought her down.
Oh, good.
This is what, so this is, this is where I stopped trying to be an investment banker and I start being bond counselor. This is a proposed timeline for what the legal process would look like in order to accomplish those projects. So in twenty twenty-five. Seems like you give one, two here.
Thank you.
The two things that we have to analyze from the perspective of bond council in order to determine what the legal process is, question number one is what is your debt service tax rate? For those school operations, again, roughly half the schools in the state of Indiana, if you're above forty cents, the process is different, a little bit more complicated and a little bit lengthier. Because your debt service rate is so low, we can avail ourselves to a little bit of a simpler process, it takes less time. So that's point number one. And then point number two, or question number two, is how much is your project going to cost? And obviously here, as we saw in the Stiefel slide deck, we identified two separate projects. Again, you can do one without touching the other. So with the, the project cost, number one being right around six point six million, and the second one being even below that, with different facilities all aggregating to that roughly five million dollar mark. This is the processes outlined according, again, to your debt service tax rate and according to the cost of each individual project. So keeping it at somewhat of a high level, we're basically looking at two months' worth of board meetings. And the other piece too is that we do involve what we refer to as a building corporation. So this is a very common structure throughout school operations throughout the state of Indiana. Lakeland has actually utilized this mechanism within the past couple of years when we did the twenty twenty-two bond. That was a building corporation bond issue. So that action would run parallel to your school board action. So again, here we're just talking information, there's no action to be taken tonight, this is just to present on what the timeline would look like. If we chose to move forward, we'd be looking at what we call a ten twenty-eight hearing or a project hearing as soon as your September meeting. That has to get noticed at least ten days prior to that. So we would furnish the structure and the language for actually all of your public notices that would begin with a no-sense of project hearing. And then we'd also outfit you with the legal resolutions and legal documents throughout this process. We'd work in connection with Stiefel, they would basically plug the numbers on how you guys choose to amortize the bond issue. And we would also discuss at public hearings, again, kind of going back over the project costs. So at that project hearing, we, that's what we cover, is what are the maximum not to exceed thresholds on those project costs? And then what are the tax rate impacts of the projects? So we covered that in September. We have a whole additional slew of public notices, again, we would draft those and work with a school corporation on, make sure that those get published and posted locally. Again, come back in October, in both your school board meetings then, and undertake the remaining authorizations. In October, you can see here when we look at the light blue, that would be the building corporation as well. We draft that documentation, and we also work in concert with your general counsel. And between them and us, we're happy to attend all these meetings and kind of walk through the scripts for the, the, the public hearing components and what the resolutions are. So again, we would have that covered in October. Culminating with, we would execute the proposed lease agreement at that last October meeting. And then the, the notion would be that we would come to market just before Thanksgiving, conduct the bond sale. Kind of similar to what you do when you close on a home mortgage, you kind of lock in a rate, and then about three weeks thereafter, you actually get the money. So that would be the timing of that. And I would also note that leading up to the bond sale, we'd be working again in connection with Stiefel on putting together the offering document for potential bond investors. Having a call on that, probably seeking a rating from a standard of course rating agency. Because Stiefel always does an analysis on what a rated bond sells in the public marketplace versus the non-rated bonds. Typically, we'll find that a standard of course rating is a, it's kind of a flashing light saying this is a good bond purchase, which will give you a lot lower interest rates. So we'll go through that process in the month of October, in the middle of, or in early November, while we're undertaking all of the school board and building corporation simultaneously. So again, that's the, at a bird's eye level, kind of the, the process and how we would work together with you guys and with Stiefel and with your general counsel on start to finish. I'd be interested in any questions you guys might have, and I know it's a lot to digest, and what do you think?
I think this is my third time hearing an ass.
You think of something new or learn something new every time, yeah.
So tonight, the only action that we were asking is that you would approve this bond timeline if we were to move forward with the bond issue. And this is the timeline that we're following. Technically, I don't think that there's any approval that's needed, but we thought it was good to talk about it in a full session and show that you agree with the timeline via your process.
So it's not at, we're not actually voting on, on the cafeteria, the office.
Just the timeline.
Okay.
Pretty much a lot of other conversations in September.
I'll make a motion to approve the bond timeline.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Thanks, Eric.
You can explain it way better than I can.
It's only taken sixteen years to get to my level.
Well, you play it loud and I can read it too. Still can't believe we're low on stamina, dude.
McKinney-Vento Plan, so each year we need to make sure that our school corporation has a plan in place for both our McKinney-Vento homeless students and our, that are in foster care. There really were not any changes other than dates to the plan that we had last year, so we asked that you approve that plan.
Or you approve, Eric doesn't have to stay, does he?
He does not.
You can stay or you can whoever you want.
I would take advantage because I have a little bit of. I mean, I appreciate everyone's time and then we'll be in touch with the next steps.
All right, yeah, safe travel.
We'll do it.
Here we have a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, next item on the agenda are policy updates. We've been given all those updates and a summary of the updates, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And we do subscribe to the Neola Company for our policies. So they have a team of lawyers that go through all the laws and make sure that what we have meets the letter of the law. These are the latest updates until the lawmakers make more.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, one second.
Comments? All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, I think this is my last one to talk about. Before you, you have the twenty-five, twenty-six teacher evaluation plan. It also includes administrators in it. So historically, we usually get this done in September, but I was wanting to get it done at the August meeting so that our administrators have a little more time to get going with evaluations to, as part of to meet all the deadlines. There really are no changes to this other than some dates and a little bit of a change to the administration. We piloted an evaluation last year, there were some things about it we didn't like, so I made some tweaks to that. But the teacher plan is the same teacher plan we've been using for the past three, four, or five years. I ask that you approve the evaluation plan for this school year.
And the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
So you guys consider evaluation tomorrow?
No, I'm kidding.
Don't do that. That would really cost us a discussion. Uh, yeah, we will not have a quarterly field to vote on.
Well, I'll make a motion that number eight, that we move that to the next meeting due to the circumstances of the forum tonight. We have to vote that we're tabled.
Second.
I think we kind of legally have to table it.
We have to table it on and up anyways, because we can't vote to get to there.
Right.
It was cute when we tried.
Number eight is tabled due to Kara's out sick and Brett's gone for a business trip and my name is in it, so we are unable to vote for it, so. Moving on to number nine.
Extracurricular Treasures Reports.
There's a lot, I went through the whole thing.
Whole thing.
Well, half of it.
Half, I know, it got a little crazy, like, okay. Basically, there's just this requirement from the State Board of Accounts that you guys reviewed those reports and just approved them. It's just honestly, it's like, yeah, kind of a standard little thing that we do, so. Yeah, that helps with us, you know, like keeping, you guys saw them. Um, yeah, it helps with us, you know, like keeping, you guys saw them, it's, yeah.
How far back do we legally have to go on those?
Huh?
How far back do you have to keep record of our extracurricular reports? How many years?
Some, it's a long time, right? We just put them in the box and-
I'm gonna do that.
Yeah. Just put them in the box and, yeah.
You're really going too far.
But yeah, as you know, they were audited last fall, for the most part. I think most of that was in the fall, um, for their ECAs and stuff, so, yeah, we're doing, doing all the right things. We, the meeting lasted about thirty seconds, I think, that day. Yeah, so, this is like, you know, so their calendar year runs a little bit different than mine too, so, yeah. So, alright.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Take your one. All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, now we're on to the advertise button.
Alright, so this is, once again, some may just need you to approve so I can advertise the budget. So we'll be doing that next month, or not advertising, but um, yeah, doing our budget thing next hearing, or report next month. Whatever I'm trying to say. Uh, yeah. Uh, so anyways, yeah, yeah, you know.
Do we have a motion to advertise the budget?
So moved.
I will second that.
All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, on to number eleven.
So, number eleven, we actually just pulled Melissa Bateman uh, as a separate item, because at the time we did the agenda, we didn't know Brett would not be here and he could not vote on that. So we're just asking you to approve Melissa Bateman as our Ag Teacher Specialty Substitute.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Slide together.
Alright, so now we are on to employment.
Yes, so under employment, we have several different things. We've had a lot of uh, professional development that teachers and other staff have been on, so we need to make sure that they get paid for that. Uh, we also are welcoming a very recent Laker, Brad and Xander Bowman, to be our esports assistant squad coach. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, lots of people to welcome to the club, so it's always a good time of year to get to onboard new people.
And welcome Mrs. Cowley.
Yes, Mrs. Cowley. We finally got her to jump over here, took retirement to do it, but we did it. And then, um, also, I know Jared is not here tonight, but we want to welcome Jared Wymer officially as our new director for the corporation.
Good move.
Perfect, um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Come on to Lakeland.
Alright, so we have some transfers. Those are mostly coaching transfers, some that are transferring from one kind of substitute to a different kind of substitute. So, or from substitute to permanent worker in the food service case. Let me ask that you approve those transfers.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, I was reading.
Motion carries. We got that. Alright, so on to resignations.
So resignations, you know, we want to be a destination corporation, but sometimes we are not the final destination for people. So we'd like to wish all of those that are leaving Lakeland the best of luck in their next adventures.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, I did notice Alexis is on here for the split athletic concessions. What is the plan with that?
Um, so also, I think in the higher league-
Melissa Pettit.
Melissa Pettit is on, on there as the next year, so she is taking it over.
Perfect. Um, all in favor? Motion carries. Alright, on to the consent agenda.
Again, it's just our typical consent agenda of minutes and payroll and plans.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, any public comments? Go ahead, share.
Um, I just want to wish uh, best of luck to all our administrators up here, and I'm missing a couple as the new school year starts. It's exciting and, and daunting all at the same time, so. I told our staff, this is the start of my thirty-ninth year here at Lakeland, so. And it doesn't feel like that, but um, it's, every year it's an exciting year, so. Um, we've had excellent professional development. Well, that's the first time I can remember we've had three days of teacher days. And even this old dog learns new tricks. So I, I enjoy learning new things. So I thought it was really well organized. I think Tracy mentioned, does Alexis get all the credit, a combo with everybody?
Yeah, she is the organizer of that.
So very informative. Uh, every, every rotation I went to was, was super informative. Um, I see her a lot, but um, you guys all know Brett's wife, Melissa. She has bailed us out of ump team jams where we're short of somebody and fills in. She would have been, I told, tell her every time I see her, she would have been a great teacher, because she really gives it all to the kids. Um, two questions. The sale of line of Brighton, was that one million dollars?
One point one.
One point, that's even better. Um, does that, which fu, of her funds does that go into? Can it go into any of operations ed funds?
So, I believe that was designated to go to rainy day?
I don't know that we have actually voted on that yet. We haven't had that discussion. I am hoping for either rainy day or operations, just because we just really need, you know, we have a lot of, I mean, I know we're doing that bond, but that's only gonna solve some of our issues, not all of them at this point, so.
Well, and it's good that we, we got money for a building that we don't do.
And it's money I can't, if I, I will say, if I put it into ed, that's hard, because um, that's something that's-
It's not renewable.
Yeah, it's not renewable. So, it would be hard to put it into an education fund, I think. It, it, it must be surfer projects and things and upgrades.
I'm assuming you're gonna do your continued looms. That would be a good thing to mention for the masses who may want to know. This is a good, good thing. Last, last one, our, so our enrollment fourteen forty-four, does that include the cyber again?
Yes.
That includes all of them, alright? That's all.
Any other public comments? Alright, we'll be on to board member comments.
Basically, good luck tomorrow and the rest of the year, but we go day by day at this point in time. I will say, um, some of you were not there, I was in there, there was a couple, but our school board retreat, I told Brett, I don't know, not too long ago, I said, I went into it a little bit thinking, oh, here we go, another retreat. But I, I, by the time it was ending, I didn't want it to end. I, I was really into it. I think I learned a lot about the administrators, well, they learned a little bit more about me, the better and different, but um, it was great. So I'm, I'm more excited this year than ever, just because of seeing the positives and everything come out of that. So even when Brad was there, it was pretty good. Appreciate you all, thank you.
Any other comments? Alright, so we'll move on to the next calendar review. The next board meeting is September tenth at the same location. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Watch that change of words.
All done.